And started a little bit late. It's good to have everyone here. Thank you to the public, friends and family that came out today. First thing, call to order. We need approval of the gen- agenda.
Move to approve the agenda?
The second motion.
We have a m- motion and a second. Agenda is approved. And are there any changes to the minutes? That, what's that? You've got some changes?
No, we have to say aye.
Oh, yeah, yeah. All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Alright. Thank you. Okay. We, uh, we have some minutes and we'll put those up for approval. Are there any changes that have not already been made to the minutes? As you've perused them? No changes?
Someone's been busy.
Yes, they have.
Thank you.
Yes, always.
I'll make a motion to approve those minutes.
Second.
Alright, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Uh, next is the consent agenda. Do we have anything on the consent agenda tonight? We do not, so we're good to go. Okay, on the administrative portion of this meeting, we'd like to welcome our new commissioners. And, uh, maybe take a moment to have them introduce themselves, or are you gonna introduce them? Okay, great.
We'd really like to welcome our new commissioners, Eric Graves, Hunter Huffman and Tyler Patching. We, looking around the room, we actually have a, a pretty, uh, new planning commission overall, which is really fun. None of the, uh, people who, except other than Genevieve, everyone is new. Our, all the seats have changed since I started here at the city in 2019, so it's fun to have fresh, uh, faces and perspectives here on the board, or on the commission. I wanted to introduce, uh, start by introducing us, and then have you each introduce yourself to us and to each other. I'm Josh Yost, I'm the Community Development Director. I'm, uh, originally a Murray native. I have lived here since 2016, with my, uh, wife and four kids. We live within walking distance of, uh, Don Joaquin Tacos and, and, uh, also the tire shop if, you know, we need to put our car over there. I've been here since 2019 and, uh, am happy to be here and be s- staff support for you. Laura Thompson is our senior planner, uh, in more ways than one. She's been here about twenty-six and a half years. Been around for everything and knows everything. Uh, she's not with us tonight, uh, but she is our, essentially our city planner, who oversees all of our, uh, current development, so any development application, any, all the development review, anything that's happening right now, she really leads the process on that. Then we have Carla Luise, who is our, uh, economic development specialist and, uh, planner, handling more long-range and project management, uh, for all of our big planning projects. And then, uh, Heather Goines is our executive assistant, and she just crossed the, how many years full-time? Ten years full-time here at the city? Five years full-time, ten years total. Carla's been here two?
He'll be two on April 11th.
So we're all kinda new too? Well, except, you know, Heather and Laura. So our average tenure is actually pretty good. And maybe we could just start at this end of the roster and have you each introduce yourselves and a little bit about your background.
Terrific. Uh, Eric Graves and I am, uh, born and raised in Mapleton, so clear up on the other side of town. Graduated from Springville High, um, graduated six children from Springville High. And we have been here over twenty years, since I was married. Have, uh, children raising their children in Springville right now, so it's kinda fun, generational. Worked in many, um, fields. Uh, I would serve ten years with the Hundred and Sixteenth Engineer Unit here in Springville. Grateful for that service with the Army and, uh, commercial real estate agent. A professional in the, uh, herb vitamin supplement industry for twenty years. And then, uh, now working in the Family History Department for the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints. So, uh, happy to serve, love, uh, love, uh, public service and, and hope I can be a good contributor.
Hunter Huffman. Just relatively new Springville resident. Uh, lived here about six years with my family, got four kids. We live over in the Reams Brookside area. We've loved it. We moved down here originally because I had a job over on Main Street, but now don't plan on going anywhere anytime soon. Love Springville, family loves it. As far as a professional background, I have a background in architectural design and, and urban design. I currently work for an in-house developer construction and architectural firm, specializing in human scale and traditional neighborhood development. So, um, very much on board with some of the steps that the city's taking to be able to promote small-scale development, walkability, those types of things.
Hello, my name is Tyler Patching. I live in Springville. We've been in Provo for almost fifteen years and just recently moved to Springville. We're within walking distance to Zeppe's, which is nice. Um, we really, uh, have actually done that quite a bit, probably more than we need to. I, um, have a small family. Uh, my wife works for the city of Provo. She's an engineer. And she works in the, um, like, engineering department. She's working with Parks and Recreation and, we have two children. I have a sixteen-year-old daughter and I have a eleven-year-old boy. And we love Springville. We have, um, really enjoyed moving here, although we are relatively new to this area. Uh, graduated from Ring of Man University in Hawaii with a degree in cultural studies and anthropology. And, um, yeah, I love people. I love to, um, I love to work with people. I, I, my previous, uh, career was in wilderness therapy, where I was a wilderness guide and ran a, helped to run a wilderness therapy program. And now I changed careers and I'm working as an electrician now for Haupt Electrical in Mapleton, and I've been there for almost seven years now. And so, yeah, I'm changing and continuing to learn and grow, and this is another aspect of that. I wasn't too long ago that I was down there, expressing some concerns about some things, but it's nice to be in this position, I guess, now too. So, yeah, looking forward to serving.
So great to have all of you here with your different expertise and I'm, I'm glad you're here, especially if you've been on the other end of the, you're gonna be a little more empathetic to what goes on out there, so, yeah, welcome. This'll be fun. And then, the next, do we get to, do we need to do anything to welcome these guys? No votes to say, "Yeah, let's let 'em in"?
No, the, the city council took care of that.
Good to go, okay.
Yep.
And then, what, what's the process for electing a chair and vice-chair? Did we have a vice-chair before?
We did. Uh, I'll talk about that at the end of the, uh, at the train, of the, at the end of the training.
Okay. So-
If we're ready for the training.
Yeah, we're ready. Uh, sorry, I'm looking at the, at the, uh, agenda and it doesn't talk about-
Well, it's just comma, "Training."
Oh, yeah, comma. Got it. I gotta read. Yeah. Onto the training then.
Uh, we do plan, uh, to have, uh, kind of a retreat with the planning commission so you can all get to know each other better and, uh, do some training, especially the new members to get, and the sitting members to be able to get to know each other. The big thing I wanna, there's basically just one training topic today, which is, I think, is a key thing for, uh, well, two training topics, but one, uh, training topic in regarding to planning and, uh, the way the planning commission works. And that is legislative versus administrative. Some of you may be asking yourself, "What does that mean?" And these are basically the two kind of actions that you take as a planning commission. So legislative actions are the for, come in the form of recommendations from the planning commission. So when there's a legislative action before your legislative item, as there are two tonight, you'll be making a recommendation to the city council, and the city council actually will take action on that because it is a law-making action. And the city council is the elected, uh, legislative body of the city that makes laws. Uh, those laws include the zoning code, which is the section of the city code with which you'll be most primarily concerned. That and Title 14 are subdivision or development code. Legislative actions are also policy-setting, uh, when we adopt things like the general plan or small-area plans. For those that have been on the, commission, uh, lately, we've had the Active Transportation Plan, the Dry Creek Plan, the Main Street, uh, the At Reframing Downtown Plan. So we've had a lot of policy-level, uh, general plan level plans that we've adopted lately that eventually make their way into the zoning code. For legislative item, all public comment is considered. You may at some point hear the term "public clamor", which is basically, uh, when a member of the public comes up and says, "I'm not happy about this. I think this is a bad thing," or "I'm concerned about this or that element of this proposal" in general without, with or without specific evidence. Essentially just saying, "As a citizen, my opinion is that this is good or bad." Public clamor can go both ways. If we're really in support of this, we're really, uh, opposed to this. So in that, in the legislative side of things, all of that, uh, public comment is welcome and considered and goes to the city council as they're, as they take action as a representative, uh, elected representatives of the city. So all of the opinions and feedback from their constituents can be a part of that process. On the administrative side, these are essentially planning commission or sometimes staff-level actions. And what an administrative action is, is applying the law. So on the count, on the legislative side, you may make a recommendation saying, "We're adopting the Lakeside Landing, uh, special district overlay," which you've done in the past, uh, number of years. On the administrative side, you would approve, let's say, one we just did, the preliminary subdivision for, uh, LGI at Lakeside Landing, which is a fifteen-acre, uh, residential subdivision. And when we do that, we basically say, "We've already adopted this law. Now we look at the application. Does the application comply with the law?" Then they, we have to give them a yes. There's no discretion as there is in, uh, recommendation of the council on a legislative item. Public comment on administrative items is limited to substantial evidence. So this is essentially, because the decision is, does the application meet or not meet the law? The only things we can consider in that, uh, decision are evidence as to whether the application meets, follows the law or doesn't follow the law. And the technical term for that is substantial evidence. And those decisions need to be based on substantial evidence on the record as to why the application meets or does not meet, uh, the code. And on the administrative side, as I mentioned, if an application meets the code, then we are obligated under state law to approve that application. There is no, uh, discretion. So tho- that's really the, the biggest first thing, especially for the new members, to understand is that we're faced with these, two different types of actions. And we need to remember that there are different parameters for dealing with both and different, uh, actions that you as a planning commission take when dealing with both. Under recently adopted, uh, changes to the Utah Land Use Development Management Act passed by the legislature this previous sess- or two years ago, two sessions ago, the planning commission's, uh, purview over some administrative items has been greatly decreased. Uh, many sub, most subdivisions have been, uh, moved to staff-level approval, where staff reviews them and says, "Do they meet the law or not meet the law?" Uh, many, uh, of those changes were, it put in place to help streamline, uh, the development process and reduce the, what some cities were making, uh, to be a cumbersome process in terms of exercising some discretionary control over especially residential subdivisions in a way that the state determined was counterproductive to providing the housing we need in our state. So, uh, for those of you who've been on the commission for a while, the amount of plats and other things you see will probably decrease and will have more time to spend, especially in the upcoming eighteen months, uh, working on the general plan and all other high-level policy and planning elements. Secondly, and for training tonight, especially as we're going to, uh, move in the next item to electing a chair, I want to just quickly go over the meeting protocols so everyone feels comfortable assuming that role, uh, if, if you want. So we start with call to order, and the chair just calls the meeting to under, order and notes the attendance. And then we approve the agenda and call for approval of any minutes. Uh, the consent agenda's an interesting one. It's the, it's an agenda where if no additional discussion, nobody has any questions, nobody has any concern, it passes simply by, uh, lack of objection. So there's no motion required on a consent agenda unless, uh, an item needs to be removed for discussion or questions. And if an item's removed for discussion or questions, it keeps its, it keeps its agenda number and moves into the regular agenda unless you want to put it somewhere else. Sometimes there's an applicant that's waiting or there's some type of other a- agenda reason that you may decide to put it somewhere else in the agenda other than where it's currently numbered. Uh, the administrative session, the chair addresses or introduces each item and calls for motions as needed. And it's the legislative session where often, uh, we have the most fun. And the legislative session is, especially for tonight, is we'll have a new chair. We start with a presentation by staff, then a presentation by the applicant. The chair can then open the public hearing. There's no motion required or vote to open the public hearing. The chair just opens the hearing. Then we have a comment from the public, and we put, uh, on the paper that's in front of you about five or six elements of addressing the commission that we'd like to, uh, make people aware of as they address the commission. To give us their name and the number, to be respectful and speak to the commission, not the audience or staff, to keep to the time limit and to avoid back-and-forth, uh, questioning and debate with the commission. And that if there are questions related to the substance of the item or procedure that they could be, those questions could be addressed to the chair, and the chair could, if at their discretion, direct, redirect those questions to staff. But generally, as staff, we're not gonna jump in and ask, answer a question from, uh, a, a member of the public that's giving comment unless we're specifically asked to by, by the chair.
Josh, in that scenario, if a commissioner wanted to ask some questions, do they ask the chair if they can ask questions, or can they jump in?
That really comes down to, I think, meeting management. Uh, it, it may be helpful to, uh, make a request of the chair, but I, I think that comes down to how they, uh, really how the chair makes a determination how to run the meeting. If we were following very strict Roberts rules, you, you would be, you know, asked to be recognized, but I don't know if that's necessary all the time.
I always try to follow the rules.
After co- uh, comment from the public, the public hearing needs to be closed by a motion and a vote, so that, we've been doing that and we need to continue doing that. Then is the time for discussion. Generally, questions of the staff applicant or members of the public, uh, are held to this point. If there are specific, clarifications or other elements about the presentation from, uh, the staff, the applicant, or staff, the applicant or the public, it's okay to ask those, but generally if we can keep the discussion together, after those presentations, we have all the information and, uh, that can be done in a more orderly fashion. Then we have our motion to approve, deny or continue the item and move ahead. And that, and after that, uh, then of the legislative session, if, unless there are any other items, then, uh, the chair would typically call for a motion to adjourn the meeting. So your next item is an election of a chair. And the planning commission code, which is laid out in, uh, Title 11, the, the zoning, there are the planning code, uh, states that the chair shall serve a term of one year until its successor is chosen in the same manner. It actually says it should be done on February first, but with terms turning over the end of March, we really probably need to amend that and have that be done in the first meeting in April. And then the vacancy in the chair is filled the same way we'd fill vacancy on the commission, that someone is elected to fill the unexpired term. And you can be elected to serve consecutive terms as chair. And as you, uh, move into the next agenda item, uh, I think generally, uh, you would call for, uh, any, uh, call for, uh, recommendations, and then call for, uh, if there are any second on those recommendations, and then you could just take a vote.
So it's not like a nomination, it's a recommendation?
Uh, it, it, either, I think that I intended to mean nomination. So however you want to handle that, uh, I don't think there's a specific procedure, but, uh, we would need those nominations to be seconded and then have a, a vote to appoint the, appoint the chair. And that's all the talking at you I have for tonight in terms of training. Thanks.
Shall I carry on or turn it to Genevieve? Okay. I'll carry on.
You can carry on.
Alright. Well, with that enlightening training, thank you, Josh. This is great. We really do appreciate it. That's the first time I've actually been through that type of a simple training, so really appreciate it. The, the next agenda item is to determine who the new chair and vice-chair will be. Do we have any nominations?
I'd like to nominate Brett Nelson as the chair.
Second.
All in favor? We have a motion and a second.
Aye.
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 I was hoping to be Genevieve.
I'm happy as vice-chair if you wanted to nominate me for that.
If you have a nomination for vice-chair.
I'd like to nominate Genevieve.
I'd like to second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, the ayes have it. Okay, wonderful. Well, let's move forward then, I guess. Ralph, you need to, you need to tell me when I'm doing stuff wrong then.
You keep the rules, you said.
I'm afraid this is gonna be a clown show.
It's on the record.
Okay.
So you'll do just fine.
With that, we'll move into the legislative session and, uh, hopefully we're able to read through the document, the, the information that was sent to us earlier this week. Uh, and the new folks, I don't know if you got that or not. Okay, great. And the first, uh, the first thing on the agenda will be presented by Carla. Thanks, Carla.
I do have one quick reminder before she gets started. We're still on the, on the YouTube stream having, uh, myself and other people, uh, that have been listening to it have had to crank it up all the way. And part of that can help if you can speak into the mic as directly as you're comfortable. Doesn't have to be like pop singer close, but when we're back here, we can hear each other because we're in the room, but it really becomes very difficult to hear on the stream, so as much as you can speak into the mic, that would be really great.
Alright, well, I'm excited to have a chance to work with all of you. I'm fairly new at the city as well and so, this is, this has always been for me. And I just became a Springville resident, so not even, just barely a month. I'm so excited. Okay, I don't think my neighborhood has a name. Does my neighborhood have a name? Well, I know, besides Platte, it's just Platte, right?
Has she been sworn in yet?
What was that?
Has she been sworn in as a Springville resident yet?
No, I've not. They're still, I'm still in that conditional period where they still might boot me. Like, I'm sorry, you need to- Platte is also the historic-
Historic center community.
Center community. Yeah, okay, okay. Yeah, I should know that. It's a little more pleasant than Platte. Yeah, Platte's just, yeah, okay. No, they're, they're still waiting on my permanent residency. I, that might be up for debate. Alright, so tonight, um, our first item on the legislative agenda is actually agenda item three. Carla Moore has requested an amendment to the Springville City Code, Title 14, 5113, that is our subdivision ordinance, um, to allow for the, um, her to move ahead with the subdivision of her lot. And she has a lot that, um, she is currently looking to subdivide. Let me, I wanna, oh, I thought there was not. Anyway. She has a lot that she's looking to subdivide so that she can build a lot, uh, build a home for her son. As part of that process, um, the city typically requires that for older infrastructure, for when someone makes a subdivision, that the improvements are required to bring the new infra, the infrastructure up to the new standards. Just kind of as development is occurring. She's looking to just divide, like I said, her lot into two in order to, um, provide housing for her son to, for him to build a home. And it would have required that the water line, um, outside in the street be brought up to an eight-inch to meet our current city standards from the, um, existing four-inch. That would have been cost prohibitive for them, and so she reached out to the city to do, to request an amendment to that section of the Title 14. And the requirement, a lot of this comes from the engineer, so I don't think I actually knew any of this stuff, until I talked to our engineer. The administrative rule in the, in Utah is, um, governs the design requirements, um, for the engineers. And it sets the minimum, um, line size, um, to be four inches. That's four inches for culinary. And then for, um, fire hydrants, eight inches. Unless you can do it, if, if it's just providing water for fire suppression, it needs to be a six-inch line. If it's doing a combined of water, pressurized, or, excuse me, um, fire suppression and also culinary, then it must be eight inches. So we, working with, um, Mrs. Moore, came up with, um, an ordinance from our engineer that would be a little bit more tailored than, um, what was initially included in her application. Simply so that, um, we could ensure that as development came in throughout the city, that where it needed to be done and needed to be upgraded, it could be. The good thing about her lot that has allowed this is that, it is close enough to existing fire hydrants, that new lines would not need to be created for that. And that is something that you will see, um, the engineer included as one of the criteria in the code for allowing that. So that if someone comes in with basically the same situation, but not within close enough proximity to existing fire hydrant, then they would not be able to get away with not bringing things up to, to our current specula- specs.
Can you show us where the fire hydrant-
Yeah, let me go to the map. Can I, Josh, I can get to the, okay. I never know. This thing scares me. I know, I, I, I knew you were gonna ask that, and I was gonna be prepared, and then I got talking to Mindy and I'm not anymore. So we're gonna blame it on the council, okay? Oh, wait. I forget, this doesn't have my... It's not all loaded up like mine. Carla, I never remember your address.
So that, can you zoom back out so I can-
Yeah, so let me, first of all, let me get, I wanna get these loaded on here first, okay?
I can see Eighth Eastern First South.
Yeah. So here is the hydrant. As you can see, in very close proximity to, um, her, her property. There would not need to be additional lines, um, tie, brought in to service her lot. And like I said, that was one of the conditions that was placed on, um, in the, in this, um, amendment by the city engineer to avoid a situation where there was not access to existing fire suppression.
Do you know how far, can you measure that while you've got the map up and tell us?
Sure.
Isn't there a code that requires that the-
Certain distance.
It's a hundred and fifty feet.
Well, okay.
One fifty's the max.
Oh, it's the max. I thought you knew how long this was. I was gonna be like, dang, I'm in for a while.
I don't know that.
Yeah, so here, yeah, so here, to her property line is a hundred and two. And then to-
Does it go to the back of that property, do you know?
Josh, you make, can you- Yeah, there, let's see, we can pull out from here and see if we can see other hydrants. Let me close this.
It's really dictated by the fire marshal, but it's typically to the nearest corner of the lot.
Which, which she makes. Yeah, so, so you see hers-
That's the cities. The fire marshal is, that's what he said is a hundred and fifty? Different cities are different, is why I'm asking.
I mean, it starts with the International Fire Code under the IBC, but, uh, there is some discretion in individual circumstances with the fire marshal.
But the other lot's gonna be to the east, right? So would it be-
It's this, yes.
It would be to the corner of the, the eastern lot, correct?
Yes.
Yeah, that corner where your, your cursor is. And that was the distance of a hundred and two, is that correct?
Yes, to here it's a hundred and two, which, uh, well, approximately with this.
So, go, yeah, go, go over to the corner of the, uh, proposed lot.
Oh, my head.
Again with your cursor, sorry.
No, you're okay. This thing just absolutely hates me.
I'm guessing it's right where the-
So even there-
Dead grass line is.
Yeah, somewhere to that effect.
So there's, that's about a hundred and seventy-two, but not with the most accurate measurement.
So it's over the one fifty, so that's my question.
And, well, you, there may be a concern as to whether the, the ordinance is tailored such to accommodate the applicant. The city engineer has review, has actually drafted the staff's recommendation on the ordinance and has determined that under his discretion or his standards, that this specific instance will be accommodated by the amendment that he's crafted.
Yes, he, uh, the city engineer and the Assistant Public Works Director, Jeff Anderson, wrote the proposed-
And didn't you say it was, it was, it was administered by the fire department?
Yeah, it's the fire marshal.
Fire marshal, yes.
They do do that review, but they really-
So do they need to review this? That's my question.
The ordinance itself, no.
Where it's, where it's not a hundred and fifty, if the fire marshal's saying a hundred and fifty is the number, then-
Uh, I don't know that the fire marshal said a hundred and fifty is the number.
But where the, who did-
Do we know what that number is?
I, I don't know off the top of my head what they're-
Was that considered by the city engineers?
Yes.
Yes.
The reason I'm, the reason I'm concerned and I'm all, all for trying to help, I'm just saying, I think we have to be really careful because if we had, if we had that house burned down, then we were in violation of our code. You know, because we took exception to it, then that would be, that would be a risk. Not only to the original owner, original owners that are here, but when they sell the house, someone else is gonna buy it. Are we in, and if we're not, if we're in violation of that all over the city, then that's a different situation, but it would be nice.
I don't, I don't know that we-
They, they will give you a mo- they will give you time.
I, I don't know that we can answer that question specifically, uh, definitively tonight, whether it meets what our standard is exactly and what this individual case, but I can confidently confirm that this case that the applicant has brought forward would be permitted under the ordinance as proposed to be amended. Now that was specifically, uh-
But that's drafted for this specific application?
It, it's not drafted for this specific application. It's drafted for any applications that meet those criteria, but these criteria weren't applied to these lots. The, the engineer tested the criteria to make sure they would work for this lot.
How, how many, how many other lots are there that will, or it's small, I think it called small, if I remember when I read it, small divisions?
That's what we're calling it, yes. Um, and there are not a lot that would actually meet this. Um, there would either be in subdivisions that are recent and have already met, but the, the infrastructure has already been brought up to specs. Or they would not meet the criteria of this, um, as that they would be too far away, um, that, and that there would be, um, a flow deficiency to feed the lots. Um, as I said, um-
So what, what is a small division?
Small division would be two unit, two, two lots.
So it-
No more than two.
One dividing.
No more than two lots, yeah.
Where, where the city, I think, is, like, cause because this is more legislative, it's, there's no specific criteria, like the hundred and fifty feet brought up now that's in the code amendment. It's all being saying, being said as in it's, there's no further fire suppression needing to be added. So where, there's nothing specific in terms of distances being amended in the code currently. It's still up to the discretion of the city engineer and the fire marshal.
That's correct. It's just, it's not saying we're changing a standard. It's just saying we're giving the city engineer objective criteria to use to determine whether or not, we can let somebody subdivide without upgrading the adjacent infrastructure. And, uh, the objective criteria is a little bit whether his, whether the city engineer's standards or concerns are being addressed. They have kind of a little bit of discretion in there using what they call engineering judgment. But, uh, Hunter is correct that this is simply establishing a process whereby the engineer can consider these instances. Uh, cause currently, as the code's currently written, we have absolutely no ability to require anything other than, uh, in this case and in other similar cases, that four inch line being replaced by an eight inch line for the entire front end of the subdivision. We have absolutely no discretion. And this just provides us a mechanism to do that.
If I'm correct, well, there's two different things we're talking about, right? Cause you, you can take the four inch line and you can require it to be an eight inch line to increase the volume, but then the second issue is how far away the hydrant is. Because the hydrant, the flow on the hydrant is based off the hose size of the truck or whoever's pumping. And that's, that's my only concern is to make sure, I, I, I'm totally, cause we have to run eight inch lines sometimes too. Or some cities won't even let you have an independent line for, uh, fire suppression, you know, for the, you cannot tap the, um, personal line with the, um, culinary line. It has to be a totally separate line. So I think it's great that we allow at least an eight inch and then take that off. But to me, that seems that, is that the case or do we, have we talked to the fire marshal or?
All the needed internal coordination happened under the purview of the city engineer and then they forwarded this recommendation to us. So this really doesn't change any of the technical aspects that either the city engineer, anybody in public works, the fire marshal will be used to determine whether additional fires, flow or additional hydrant coverage is needed, but simply gives them an ability to use, uh, consideration of the adequacy of fire flow and hydrant spacing to determine whether or not somebody actually needs to upgrade a pipe in this very certain instance. But it really defers all that technical determination, uh, to staff under that, under that broad statement of if no additional, uh, fire flow is necessary.
So it's basically up to the city engineer whether he decides the flow, cause I, I saw his, his stuff on the flow. But that's different than it is to the hydrant location.
Right, uh, there, I can't, I don't think either of us can really speak to the technical, uh, determination behind it, just to the, uh, what, just the mechanism it's providing to we, uh, unfortunately, the engineer's not able to attend tonight. Uh, we, we're hoping that he would be able to. And if there are additional technical concerns, uh, you always have the ability to continue the item. But in terms of, uh, the process it sets up for staff to make that determination, we feel comfortable, uh, with that, with that process.
So to maybe close, close out what, what Ralph has been pushing at here. Has the fire marshal seen this? And if so, does he need to give his, his approval or stamp on it or anything?
Yeah, if I could, if I could, yeah, if I could speak to this for just a second. So Chris cord- Chris, as our city engineer coordinated everything that needed to be done. Mainly, the point is with the fire hydrant, and this is, if you'll look on the proposed amendment from him on page two. A, um, number four, no additional fire suppression improvements are required, such as fire lines or fire hydrants. So there would not, there is a fire hydrant within the proximity that is necess- that can be the necessary proximity to be tied into. And, um, there will not be the need for a nu- a new fire hydrant to be put in. And I think that is what he was concerned about, that, um, often along with this, when a subdivision comes in, that, um, regardless of what it is, there is not a fire hydrant within close enough proximity. And so one would need to be put in, which would have to have the higher line. This has one in existence already. Um, a new fire hydrant would not need to be put into. And I believe that that is, um, was the main concern in regard to the fire hydrant. And I may have misspoken on that as far as the distance. But I do know that the internal coordination, um, as far as making sure that it would meet everything that would need to be done for our fire to be able, fire department to be able to provide adequate services was done prior to this being drafted and presented to me.
But also this does not change any of those underlying standards.
Yeah.
Doesn't change our requirement for how far you need to be away from a fire hydrant, what the coverage or, or fire flow. It just allows the engineer to us, use that as an element of their assessment.
Yeah.
I understand. I just wanted, I think it would be helpful if the, um, fire marshal was in a, in agreement with it because that's, there's usually kinda two independent bodies that have in a city that are managing that. One guy has to fight the fire, the other guy's just trying to get the flow.
Right. So in each case, the fire marshal, when somebody came in to do this, the fire marshal would be involved in making that determination that no additional fire suppression improvements are required.
He's, he's signed off.
On every building permit, the fire marshal would review that, or on this subdivision, sorry, on a subdivision where they propose to not do that improvement, he would through the development review process, say, have a say in whether additional fire suppression requirement, improvements are required.
Well, I, I wanna be fair to the applicant though, because they need to know that upfront. If, you know, they don't wanna get all the way down the process and then when they get ready to apply for permit and the fire marshal says, oh, well, I didn't see that. I, I've been in that si- that situation before. And then the fire marshal says, no, I just, in fact, they just added a fire hydrant on one of our projects just because the fire marshal wanted a pro- wanted a hydrant there. It isn't in the code, doesn't re- isn't required, but he just said, I want it in there, so you had to put it in. I just think for the applicant, that's an important thing for them to know upfront. And if the fire marshal signs off on it and blesses it, then we're good, I think. Uh, in my view.
Now, that's understandable to want to know the answer to this specific case before advancing the amendment.
So if I'm to understand this amendment, it covers that. Um, with number four, it says that, uh, as long as no additional fire suppression is needed.
Right.
That's the way I read it. Is that-
The question in this case is just whether in this specific case for Ms. Moore's property, it will meet these criteria.
Right.
So that we don't get through this process and then give her another roadblock.
Right. Well, the, the fact is that could be the case.
It could be the case. I hope we have done that work.
But this gives us that latitude to say that we're covered. And
Right.
In this or any other, um, uh, amendment request moving forward, that it has to meet the, uh, fire, uh, suppression.
Yeah, we feel the city's well protected. We're just, I think the concern is, are we being fair to the applicant in adopting something that actually works for them?
Yeah, and I think that still prevents the city from getting into any issues with, uh, exactly what Ralph talked about.
Correct.
Uh, problems with the fire marshal, so.
We're talking about modifying the code, not approving her plat, right?
Right.
Correct.
I mean, that's clar- that's clarification. I think the, I think the, the, what I've read with the thing, I'm totally comfortable with that. I'm trying to be fair to the applicant to recognize that you are still, unless someone was to say, absolutely, we will accept that. And if I had a net letter from the, I'm going to another city commission tomorrow for that same exact thing. Planning, I get to sit on that side, okay, for this next meeting. So I just do appreciate it, but they, the city would not write me a letter saying that, you know, that it had to be done, that it was approved until we went back through the whole process. So I'm just trying to be fair to you. I think that's clear that you know that, so.
It's a great clarification.
Yes. So are there any other questions for me before you hear from the applicant?
Can I ask a question? Why, why is the applicant on this talking about, we're not, we're not talk, we're talking about an amendment to the code, right?
Yes, but she did help in, she did meet-
That's great. I appreciate it. I'm just trying to say-
For, made the application and then the city engineer had concerns with the broadness of their, uh, rec- of their initial proposal. So worked together with the applicant to craft a proposal that both parties were comfortable with, but this is still the applicant's application and, uh, their amendment.
Yes, um, the-
So we aren't the applicant, she is the applicant.
Yes, Ms. Moore is the applicant. Um, and her, um, her version of how she would have, would have made the changes are here. When we looked at this, it was, we felt that it was too broad and did not offer the city the protection it would need or the ability to, um, enforce others to bring it up to standards. Um, and so working with the city engineer, um, this was presented to her. She and, um, Chris Wilson, the engineer, and I met, um, and we talked about this. And she was aware of what we would be proposing as an alternate to her amendment. But yes, she is still the petitioner, although the city has recommended an, an alternate amendment. All right, are you good? Did I get you answered? All right, perfect. Thank you.
No more questions? Right, we'll turn the time over to Ms. Moore then.
I brought a bunch of papers, but I don't think it's quite what I need because it's a little bit of a different setting than what I was thinking. Um, but, uh, one thing that I wanted to make a point of when you said that, um, when you were interested in like reselling, because, you know, this will be our properties and so yeah, if it burns down, it burns down or whatever. Um, actually, the city has a plan in three years to modify that water line. It's going to be changed to eight inches anyway. So that was one of the big concerns for me, is why make me pay for it? It, it really takes this whole, you know, small housing thing that we're trying to do. I don't know if you're aware that we're forty-fifth in the nation for the, the prices of housing. I mean, I think it's actually worse than that now, but this is the last thing that I read. I mean, it seems as though, why? And what can we do? Because our kids are not able to do this unless there's some kind of scam artist, you know, and that a lot of people do well with that. But, um, so anyway, I just thought, I'm not trying to make any money on it. Gonna give it to my son, his wife Haley, and babe Luke. And so, anyway, if they had that, then that would at least take the lot price off of it. And of course, that, that's not what you're concerned with right now, but that, that's the basis for all of this. That's why we're doing it. And plus, as you can see right here, Carla, I'm Carla too. So I mean, you know, there's, it's a weird thing. That's hard to keep up, this part. And if we're worried about fire, then when the weeds grow, that's worse than a house there. You know, I mean, I'm, I'm just saying. And I do keep it down, but when I've had renters, you know, then it's been a little bit of a problem because this little house right here is a rental house that I use. And I was just over there today and it's all, it's a, it's a lot to mow. And so it would just be taken, it, it would be such a better use. And, um, talking about the fire as well, the interesting thing is I could build an ADU there and we wouldn't have to go through any of this process, which is interesting. So, but by subdividing the lot, then we do have to go through this process and be concerned about the water line and all that thing. But I could have done an ADU. But the problem with that is I ha- I would have to inhabit that house. But as far as the logistics, you see what I'm saying. It doesn't make any sense. But, you know, most things don't. But anyway, I just wanted to bring that up. And, you know, this is a little family that we're hoping that we can get this all settled by next week.
It's just such a great piece of property too.
I know, it is.
Yeah.
You know, it's, it's a beautiful area. It's so quiet and I've met all my neighbors. They're all in favor of it. You know, I've got Marty over here. I've got Karen over there, who's not a Karen. She's a really nice girl. And, you know, it, anyway, it's just, it's a nice area. So anyway, that's, that's all I have to say. And I appreciate your concern too, because that isn't concerned, but knowing that in three years, the city's gonna be changing that water line anyway.
Thanks. Are there any other comments from the public?
You just open the public.
Oh, you have to open it?
Yeah. You just say-
Says no motion is needed to open hearing.
No, you don't do a motion. You just say that the public hearing is open.
Okay. With, with that, thank you for your comments. And if there's no other questions for her, we'll go ahead and open a public hearing for anyone that has anything to offer. Okay.
Not seeing anyone approaching the podium, I move to close the public hearing.
Be a second.
So moved. Do we vote that?
Yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So we, we need a, we, we have to close it with a vote, but we don't have to open it with a vote.
Correct.
Okay, great, thanks. All right. Is there any other questions or comments? All right, is there any other questions or comments amongst the commission?
I did have the, a question for staff, if they knew why, from her application to this one, why the number was changed from three lots as a maximum instead of two? But it, it's listed as two.
Let's, let's go ahead and have Carla answer.
I think, I, I just put three because I didn't know what I was doing, that's all. You know, I put three because I didn't want to, you know, make it just for me, actually. I thought if it's another little, you know, somebody has three quarters of an acre or something like that, and they wanted to do three, that's all.
Well, and that's, that's exactly why I bring up the question, because if, if it were to be the case that someone has an acre lot, and they want to divide that into three third acre lots, then would that fall under this code?
No.
Like, I, I know, I know it currently doesn't, but I'm, I'm asking the question, why was that changed? Or is that something to consider?
We wanted to limit the number of instances where a developer would not be.
Right.
Okay.
Thanks Hunter, any other comments or questions?
Well, I think with the wording in there, that we're covered for that too, so that's a great, great thought.
Do we know, is the city going to upgrade that line?
That is on the capital facility, or the ca- the capital improvement plan, yes. As an identified project.
That's not specifically related to the ordinance change, because the ordinance change would go for everything.
Yes, that, she is correct, that's correct.
That was probably part of the engineer's assessment, I'm assuming.
Uh. Not directly, uh, because that's not true, uh, that didn't, that's not one of the criteria for the ordinance.
Yeah. So, but it, it, when she applies for a subdivision, then that would be related, because it's a specific spot. But it still would fall in the criteria. It's not a criteria.
It, it, it was really just, uh, part of the, the discussion, uh, because it's obviously frustrating to the applicant to say, this is going to be done, but if I want to act now, I have to pay for it. Uh, so isn't there a way to work around that? And we, we determined that future capital facilities plans weren't necessarily the way, the criteria we wanted to use. Uh, but that, that is true in this case.
Any other comments, questions, discussion? Okay, if no, I'll open it up to a motion to approve, deny, or continue.
I'll move to recommend the adoption of the amendment to the Springville City Code, Title fourteen, Chapter five, Article one, Section one thirteen, as presented by the city engineer.
I'd second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye here also. So, move forward with that, congratulations. Okay, next item on the agenda is Eternal Springs LLC requesting to amend the Springville City Code. And Carla, you're back in.
Hi.
Congratulations.
Again, I know. All right, so this is an, um, application request for, um, an amendment to the Springville City Code to the land use matrix to permit senior independent living in the neighborhood commercial zone. Um, currently, we do not allow residential of any type in the, um, neighborhood commercial zone. Um, other than, um, we do have an exception for, um, publicly owned senior housing as a conditional use, um, typically public owned senior housing, um, has a lot of restrictions on it that the public and the, and the state put on it, um, which are greater than we would. And then the only other type of residential that we act, and it's not technically residential, is assisted living facilities and memory care. Um, and there are currently two in the, in this, and in the NC zone. Now, the petitioner owns one of them. Um, they are looking at, as, um, some of you who were not here, probably will not remember, we, um, just last meeting, we met, um, to talk about, I think it was last meeting, it may have been two, um, to rezone the entire parcel that wa- that is owned by them. I'll show you, well, we can bring it up on our little handy dandy map here.
It's also in the attachments, correct?
I believe there is a, there is a picture for you, yes. Um, and it will, and it shows that, um, we did a rezone of the property, um, for some reason, um, dating way back, the parcel had been, uh, this is a parcel that was, had two separate zones on one parcel. Um, and we have not updated our map yet, so it will still show that way. You can see, um, that it was, we changed it to be all neighborhood commercial, which is some of the pink. There was a small section of residential that had been done that way as part of the, um, plans for the residential behind it. Um, that was, that motion, or that amendment to the zoning map was approved by the planning commission and the city council. We just have not updated the, the city map yet. So, they're looking at this parcel to do, um, independent, senior independent living. Um, we've put some conditions on, we, on it to, for it to be a conditional use, so that, um, we would make sure that it was true to what, um, seen, independent senior living truly would be. Um, and in doing that, we also kind of, um, tightened up our definition in, um, the Development Code, Title eleven of, um, Senior Independent Living. And, um, then place these, place specific conditions on that, on, on that as a use.
That was approved, right?
Yes, uh, the, um, rezone was, was approved.
And that's, that's number five here, that, that you're talking about on our.
Yes.
Okay.
Hey, could you go back to the, oh, no, you're on it now.
Where do you want?
Yeah, what is the conditional use?
So the condition.
Something's nagging at the back of my brain here from.
So a conditional use just simply says that, um, by, we spell out specific conditions, so they are not.
Sorry, I know what the conditional use is, but what's the, what's the misapplication that we're worried about?
Well.
I remember we talked about Allen's Corner, there were, there were some.
Well, there was some concern that it would be used to bring in, um, people would apply saying that they are doing senior independent living, um, but it would really just be age restricted multifamily. Um, and so we wanted to make sure that we tightened up the definition of senior independent living, so that the services were being provided, um, that made it the, um, the senior independent living, um, without just being age restricted to, um, and making, having it be a workaround that someone could get, um, multifamily in there.
And I remember this is a, this was a major concern in the past, and are we confident that the conditional use will, will address that issue?
We are, simply because if, if you will look at how, um, senior independent living is, um, will be defined, it's on, um, eleven, three, four oh two of your packet, um, that, um, it limits it to age sixty-two years or older, um, who do not require assistance with activities of daily living or twenty-four hour skilled care. Um, but they will be offered services such as dining, basic housekeeping, laundry services, and transportation. You will not see that in a multi fa- in an age restricted multifamily. Um, they, that just is not something that a, a multifamily developer is going to be providing. Um, it also allows for, um, and as, I shouldn't say our definition, but, um, the services typically have some sort of, um, ability, if, if, um, emergency care is needed, that that can be accessed. And that is one of the, um, services that they would be offering. Um, in addition, because we are requiring, uh, um, that it is co-located with, uh, with an assisted living facility, um, that that will also limit it. Um, and it can't just be sitting next to it, they, they, they have to have some kind of symbiotic relationship.
So the emergency care would be on site?
Well, it would be au- at the, offered at the assisted living if someone was there. Um, and like I said, it, it creates, it, we have to have that symbiotic relationship. They couldn't just, it, the assisted living and the senior independent living have to coordinate care together in some way, which is what they will be doing.
Is that, is that stipulated by co-located?
Yes, a co-locat- yes, a co-location, yes.
Not just that they're next to each other, but that they have a, a relationship between.
And if you feel that that needs to be tightened up a little bit more, we can. Um, but we did put that it was co-located, um, and with, on the same or adjacent parcels. Um, so, um, if you feel that that is not, um, strong enough for, to, to prohibit or to avoid any, um, workarounds from others, then, you know, that can, you can include that in any kind of recommendation you were to make.
Sorry, is that, co-located, is that defined as co-owned or, because?
It's not.
Located next to it, and then someone sells the other facility, you've got two independent people, and they're like, we, we don't supply you guys emergency services.
We could add a requirement that they be owned and operated, uh, by the same entity, or that they, some other type of.
Partnering entity, yes.
Yeah, we could, and we could add a provision that way.
Because you could get two tenants, and one could say, we, we're not going to supply, the liability and the insurance. All of that would totally change for one operation facility if they had to.
Okay, yes, we, and, but, yes, and we can certainly, um, include that in, in, uh, as you make your motion to make that amendment.
And, and that's typically not a service that's provided in senior independent living. But in, really the case we're trying to address here is where we have an existing provider that would like to provide a wider continuum of care to people that may, uh, be approaching the point where they need some assistance with daily activities or other types of things, but aren't yet, but need almost an in-between, between living in a, independently in a home, in their own home and living in there, that they could, uh, provide an option for that before somebody needs the more intensive care offered in their facility.
Community.
It is.
To have a transitional step by step, you know, without having to like relocate across the county, so.
Exactly, or to, or to, um, either go to a facility before you really need that level of care, or stay in your own home past the point of nee- of maybe needing more care. And this allows them to maintain their independence as long as they are able to. Um, and I think that's, I think that's very important for, um, our elderly population.
Yeah.
Um, and to also to provide some, um, peace of mind for their families as well. Um, so, um, that is, um, like I said, we tightened up that definition. And if you feel that we need to tighten that up even more, we are more than happy to take that into consideration as well.
Hey Carla, it, so, so I know that the applicant owns Ashford, which is, uh, in my opinion, really wonderful facility.
Yes.
Um, do they own Stonehenge as well?
They do not.
But Stonehenge will be providing the emergency care?
No, um, the assisted living actually, and I will let, I will let the petitioner speak to that. He knows his facility much better than I do. But, um, is my understanding, as I've spoke with the petitioner, that the, um, that the emergency care could be provided by the twenty-four hour care that is provided at the assisted living, that they would be able to ma- to meet those needs if, in the emergency situations that may arise. But I will let him answer that more, more specifically.
So, I, I have a question for the commission, is it, can I address the commission?
Sure.
Okay, so i- is it, do you think it'd be necessary that the contractual arrangement between the facility and this new, um, proposal be necessary? Or would you think, for instance, in this case, if they could contract, or if they, uh, reached an arrangement with Stonehenge, so in, in the case that Ralph was bringing up, um, the party split, and it was no longer a jointly owned, uh, property, that instead of, um, some other arrangement saying it has to be some contractual, uh, adjacent property, could they say arrange with another facility, or, or just have a certain amount of care or, or, um, facilities provided within a certain distance?
I think we may have caused some confusion.
Okay.
With the Stonehenge.
Right.
And I don't, I'm not trying to bring them into it, what I'm saying is.
The definition actually states that it, it's a facility that does, for people who do not require assistance with activities of daily living or full-time twenty-four hour skilled care. So this is, they don't, there's no requirement that they provide that skilled care.
Okay, so that's not even contingent.
Emergency services they do support.
No.
No, okay.
There's no requirement in the definition that that be provided either. It's specifically defining that that's not part of senior independent living, but.
So tying it to that would be unnecessary anyway.
So, we simply wanted to make that, uh, an option in the neighborhood commercial zone without op- opening the neighborhood commercial zone up to incognito multifamily development under the guise of senior independent living.
But Carla, will you go back to that?
So the emergency services would be just part of the business plan that Ashford Living has.
So there'd be no requirement on our part?
No requirement, no, but it does, um, just say that by providing the co-location, um, that.
Added service.
It is, it will provide an additional level of safety for the families that are bringing them, their elderly parents to live here.
Could I, can I ask you to go back to the zoning map?
Of course.
Go ahead Hunter.
And to your point, co-located, I mean, does, is it entirely necessary that they are co-owned or contractually obligated to operate?
And that, and, and that.
That's my point, good clarification.
Because I, I would agree, I don't know that that's entirely necessary if they're still meeting the definition that we've updated in our city code.
And unless we have a serious reason to require that, yeah, I'm, that's exactly.
Yeah, that was, that was more a, a, a service that, um, Ashford's li- senior li- or assisted living would be providing. Um, and then, so that is why they felt that this would be an ideal location, um, and would be an ideal service for them to be able to extend, um, and the petitioner can speak to this, but he's, as he and I have spoken, um, they have numerous phone calls. Do you provide this service? Is this something that you do? No, we're more acute level of care. Um, and so seeing the need, um, they, they've moved forward with this as part of a business.
So I see like a Cove Fort over in, in, in Orem, and I don't think there's any adjacent or any need for.
Yeah, many senior independent livings do not have them. This, like I said, that's just an additional service that Ashwood would be able to provide. And as, as, and as a result, that is why they felt that this was, um, a, a really opportune service for them.
This is just for the neighborhood commercial zone, which does not allow independent.
Living.
Elder, sis- uh, independent living. Um, but it does allow assisted living. And so, this is a narrow condition to allow them to provide that service in the neighborhood commercial, but it needs to have that assisted living so that we don't have just independent.
Doesn't open it up to.
Senior living all over, just on their own sites.
So, so will you overlay that, the zoning on that again?
Of course.
Like you had, because it just, a question of curiosity here, it looks like the lot is divided into two different zones.
Yes, so this is what I was speaking about. So, um, they, they came to us, um, previously, um, to have this all made into one zone. Whoops, I don't know why that's doing that, sorry, because I clicked the wrong thing.
That's fine, no, that's fine right there.
Yes, and we just, and we have not updated our map, but we did approve, and the council, and then it went to council, and the council has approved for this entire parcel to be made neighborhood commercial. So, within our ordinance, it is now neighborhood commercial for the entire.
So all of that will be the same zone?
Yes, it's just that, like I said, um, we do not have a GIS person, and so I'm kind of the GIS person, I'm really, really bad at it. And so, um, I'm still kind of learning, so I just haven't updated the map to reflect that.
Okay.
So we're talking step two now, is we've put it neighborhood commercial, and now they're asking for something that's not allowed in neighborhood commercial. And we're talking about modifying the code, right? That's, that's.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes.
That's, I, I was here when we did this.
Yes, and to clarify, it would not have been allowed in the residential zone either. So it, um, it would not, if, if we had left it as the two separate zones, or they had done it all into res- into the residential zone, it wouldn't have been allowed in that either. So, um, we didn't create a problem for ourselves.
It was the only thing from stopping someone doing, okay, we'll just say a fifty-five and older type community. The only thing that's stopping that is this co-location clause in there?
No, because the definition has a sixty-two years and older stipulation.
Sixty-two year.
Changes it from fifty-five to sixty-two.
Yes, and.
I'm just saying, you still.
Good question, yeah.
Well, they would also have to be licensed, they would also have to come get a business license that says that they are, their business, they are, they're obtaining a business license as a senior independent living facility, um, not as an apartment or multifamily complex. um, not as an apartment or multifamily complex.
So do we have a current z- zone that would allow that use right now?
We do.
What is that zone?
Go to the land use matrix, Carla.
That's where I'm going.
Be on the chart in our packet too.
It might, yeah, but I don't, the, I didn't include the entire matrix because it's a zillion pages long, and I didn't want to.
Well, it's conditional in our MF1, our MF2.
No, that, you'll need to look at the second line.
Next one down.
Yeah, so, uh, senior independent living is currently, right now, only allow, um, allowed in the, um, Main Street South Gateway Zone.
MS, yeah.
And then only, um, and then, as you can see, there was a, um, a, a five, which is no more than ninety-five senior independent living units shall be located within the MSSG zone. So it is, um, a very limited.
How many units are being proposed?
Um, that will be, a lot of that will be decided, um, at the site plan, um, process when they go in, um, they will, will have to talk about, um, you know, how it will be, um, cited on the parcel, as far as setbacks and all of that, and how, and the number of units, but, um, that, like I said, that will be decided at the site plan, maybe.
Can you?
That's because once the code's modified, then it goes into a whole different category.
Yeah.
Is there a reason we don't just use a conditional use permit, since it's a specific application?
Because the use is not conditionally permitted in the zone.
That's what this is.
That's what this is, it allows for the conditional use permit?
Yeah, it's just not permitted in the zone at all. So, we have no, we can't do a variance for uses, we can't grant a conditional use permit for a use that's not permitted as a conditional use. We have to add it in as a conditional use before we can up, go through that process.
Any other applicant coming would have to get a conditional use permit?
Correct.
Correct.
They will, and any, any applicant.
Any other applicant would have to.
And then we would judge that application based on the conditions we're adopting.
Based on the conditional use, right, okay.
Yes.
Which may have been Brett's initial concern with a conditional use permit.
It is, still is, yeah.
That, people used to think of conditional use permits as kind of a king's X, that if it was conditional, we could di- uh, we could deny it for whatever reason we wanted, and under state code, we can't. A conditional use is really a permitted use, the only difference is that we can mitigate the adverse effects of a use by imposing reasonable conditions.
Inside that conditional use permit.
Inside that conditional use permit, so if we're worried about a dance hall being really loud, we can say, you need to do something to deal with the noise, or with the light, or the hours of operation. We can't impose unreasonable conditions to, so that they can't locate there just cause we don't want them, and we can't just arbitrarily deny the use. We have to permit it, but we can impose conditions. And in this case, I feel that Carla's done a good job of, uh, clearly, of, of closing some holes in the definition, and then making some very specific conditions in the specific use, in the conditional use criteria.
And then there were a couple of comments made by Genevieve and Ralph that you guys may wanna put into any motion that might be made this evening. Up to you.
Well, um, so, um, if, unless you don't have any more questions for me, I'll allow the petition, you can, um, speak to the petitioner, if that would be, that will help you at all, okay.
Let's turn the time over to the petitioner.
Thank you, I'm Greg Neil, I'm one of the owners of, of Ashford Assisted Living. Um, there's two of us that are owners, Rob, Eric is the other owner, um, so we own Eternal Spring, which owns the land, uh, that we're talking about, where we'd like to do independent living, um, we've been, we opened Ashford, uh, it's almost eight years now, and we've loved it, this, this has been a great, great place. Um, great service, great staff, um, we have about a hundred staff members, and like was mentioned, we've had a lot of people come in, and they don't quite need assisted living, or they don't need help with like bathing, or dressing, or, um, incontinence care, or medication assistance, that sort of thing. And so these people, we'll have a lot of people that, or, they, they might even be on that border, and a lot of times, the kids will come and say, I really need my mom to move in here, and the mom's like, I'm not coming in there, you know? But, uh, what we wanna provide is the, these independent living, we call them cottages, it's basically like a little thirteen-hundred square foot, two-bedroom, two-bath, um, uh, cottage, and with a single-car garage, which maybe twenty-five percent of them will potentially drive, cause they're still a little bit independent, but a lot of them won't. But for, for the elderly, it's a really easy transition for them compared to moving into assisted living. Assisted living's a little harder for them, cause they feel like they're giving up some of their independence. Here, they feel like, oh, I get my own place, and you're gonna let me bring my car, and it's like, yeah, just don't drive it. And, and then from, from the assisted living standpoint, we'll be able to cook meals in the assisted living, cause we've got our commercial kitchen there, and provide meals out, um, to the independent living residents, and provide some activities for them. In regards to the emergency care, I wanted to clarify that, so we, we don't, like, our staff, what we'll end up doing is having a nurse call light in the residence, uh, in the independent living cottages, and if they pulled that, that should be like a very rare occasion, like, they fell, they just need someone to come out there and help them, and, um, and if we saw that were a consistent thing, we'd be just talking to the kids or them about having to move into assisted living at that point, and saying, you know, you really do need more care, and we can't be providing, um, cause there's certain things we can't provide, um, for independent living, otherwise it's considered assisted living, it's a different type of care, so. The only thing I wanted to bring up, and just to make sure in this discussion, is, so we, Rob and I, we own, we both are the owners of both properties, but they are owned by separate, different entities, but we own both of, of the entities, so it's not a problem of ownership. I just don't wanna run into a situation where we have, you know, Cornovaca, which owns the, the Ashford land and building, um, it's not the same entity as Eternal Spring, even though it's owned by me and Rob, does that make sense? So, and anyway, any questions or any concerns I can address?
I, I have a question, how do you, so how do you, how do you propose then, if, if you do decide to sell, that someone doesn't split it up, and turn that, those cottages into a, you know, just a, just a family living space? What do we have, do we, is it business license, is it, I mean, what is that, how does that?
Yeah, that would.
I'm asking both of you, I don't know how that.
From the city side, we could handle that through enforcement, uh, both on the licensing side and just the general, uh, in the business licensing section, we have enforcement, uh, mechanisms, and in the land use, in Title XI, we have enforcement mechanisms too, and if they, these turned into just rental, uh, housing units for the general population, we could enforce, yeah, based on both, uh, elements of the code, from, from the city side.
Or if you needed the owners saying, we're happy to sign a document saying that this one will provide for this, type thing.
That's gotta be difficult to enforce. I don't, yeah, I don't, i- is that something we've dealt with as a city before, enforcement of those kind of? So for instance, we have the fifty-five and over communities, is that, the, the cities enforce that?
Goes back to the same issue, how, how is this gonna be?
The fifty-five and older community is technically not a licensing or land use issue, we don't.
CC and ours with the buildings, right.
Totally CC and ours with the buildings.
What about, what about the building that's over where, uh, it was originally s- um, slated there, where the old church was on, just off of Fourth?
Mm-hmm.
Tell us a little bit about that, and how that's evolved, and how the city's managing that.
That, I, I don't have as much background on that, I, I do generally understand that, uh, some, uh, there's a perception that the initial, uh, proposal from the county was for exclusively, uh, age-restricted, affordable housing, and that there may have been some deviation from that, but that facility.
I think it was a female.
Are you talking about the one just over here?
On Main Street, right here?
On Main Street.
Yeah, that, that's not a licensed facility, uh, so we don't have any licensing control over that, and, uh.
It's a county thing, right?
I- i- it's owned by, uh, essentially the county housing authority, and.
They have not managed it at all, if I, uh, this is what you're concerned, right?
I, I understand, cause I'm a little bit, I was a little bit involved in that at the very beginning, the i- idea was, the concept was, is we're gonna create a facility for senior housing, for, um, elderly sisters, that they would feel safe, and that they could all be in a building, and they could afford it, and so the government put in money to create that. Then it became unsustainable, and so then they opened it up to now, you know, and so some of the residents there, it was a challenge for them, because that's what they were thinking, that's why I'm try, just curious how that, you know, it's the, it's the down-the-road thing that's a challenge, cause, I mean, we're not, we're not enforcing that kind of, you know, and not coming for a business license, so.
And as far as I understand, there are no provisions of zoning that were requiring what you stated, but it was essentially what had been committed by the applicant, in this case, these are specific zoning provisions, not simply granting an approval with the good faith assurances of an applicant, which is what we wanna avoid doing, because when those good faith assurances are abandoned, we have no recourse, in this case, we do have recourse.
This gives us something to hold them against, and.
I think it's a great idea, I mean, I.
Yeah.
My, my parents are probably in that candidate rule right there, and I'm over sixty-two, so, maybe I'm ready to move in. But all, all I'm just trying to protect down the road, I've seen, you know, five, ten, twenty years down the road, and then it becomes a challenge, cause I think you've done a great job in managing, and, you know, I've been in that facility, had some people there, so.
Another thing that, um, was brought up that I, that might help with that concern is the idea that this is, we're not able to subdivide these independent living cottages, they're all, they all have to be owned by one entity, so it's not like we could sell them off, and.
An apartment building.
Yeah.
Any other questions for the applicant? Okay, thanks very much. Okay, with nothing else, we'll open a public hearing, do we have any, anyone from the public that would like to make comments? No? You guys don't have anything to say, all right. Well, if there's no comments.
Not seeing anyone coming up to the podium, I move to close the public hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, the public hearing is closed, any additional discussion to be had amongst the?
I, I have a couple of questions, uh, number one, on the, um, proposed city code, I don't, is this proposed, or is this already been approved, ratified?
The, it's, that's proposed.
That's proposed, it's not, okay. Wh- what purpose would A serve, uh, with this discussion?
Like it, it needing to be co-located?
Yeah, what, what purpose would that be in the, uh, new NC zone, zoning ordinance?
It limits the places where this use could be done, uh, we, there's an interest in generally protecting the NC zone, and having that primarily serve a neighborhood commercial function, uh, but in, s- in a few cases, this is appropriate. We didn't wanna open it up, it's just a general permitted use in the zone, uh, we didn't feel it was, it's, if you read the purpose or the intent of the neighborhood commercial zone, this use doesn't broadly fit that intent and purpose, but in small, in s- individual cases, based on these criteria, that we felt that it was appropriate, especially noting that there are, uh, very few instances where, that, very few areas in the city or locations that meet these criteria.
So, it's just a limiting factor is what you're saying?
Correct.
And, and what's the worry there, cause I think there's an interesting question, um, with the baby boomers move, all move in that direction, that's why, I mean, that's why Ashford is, is so successful right now, and that's why this, I think, will be also successful, and what makes it a great idea. So what, what, I mean, is it helping with the prevention of manipulation, or is it just more, we're encouraging, we don't want a whole bunch of these facilities around, or, I mean, what's the?
Both.
Sorry, I'm just tagging on to your question.
Oh, I, that's where I'm still grappling in my mind, is, is why we need that, um, in there.
We're using kind of a blunt instrument to say it's okay in this instance, and in other similar instances, but not generally.
That's a pretty specific instance.
It is a very specific instance.
The neighborhood commercial's not intended for residential, and I feel like, like, having them co-located is an attempt to make it not residential small cottages, but make it a, a function of a business. So it is commercial, but it is not assisted living, they can independently live, but it's to keep it from the, the residential from approaching into that neighborhood commercial zone.
Yeah, I, I understand, but I don't think, I, I don't, I mean, and, and I'm a very narrow scope here, but I, I don't see that happening in other cities. I don't see co-location requirements, um, so I'm, I'm just curious i- if we think that's gonna be essential part.
Just in this, it just in the neighborhood commercial zone, and, uh, in the other zones where it's permitted, it's subject to those other conditions, generally, it's not a, uh, use that is widely permitted in the city, or a use that, these are typically dealt with through just age-restricted, uh, housing, but we have had a specific instance in the city that we're s- actually, uh, engaged in federal litigation about, uh, where an applicant came in, uh, with a project that was touted as being an age-restricted facility, providing services, and then was essentially converted, it through the application process, to a multifamily project, which, which was not in line with what the city had wanted, and the city, through a s- through a whole bunch of legal wranglings, they were able to obtain permission to do that under certain criteria, and we wanted to avoid that happening again, because that was, has been a very, uh, souring experience, very painful process for us.
So, you're, you're thinking that if we don't, if we eliminate A, we, we are subjecting ourselves to probably that same avenue, or could we do it without, or?
Uh, I, I think there are more neighborhood commercial sites that could be, uh, used for this use, and it's a pretty, it's a growing, like, Brett's mentioned, it's a use where the demand is growing, and we don't want it to overrun our limited neighborhood commercial areas. But as we go through, uh, a- as part of the general plan process, ta- kind of on the tail end, but integrated with the process, we're going to go through a process of overhauling the whole code, and that will be something we really address in depth there, and the code may at that point rely less on, uh, prohibiting or permitting individual uses, and rely on some other criteria that may give us more ability to have nuance and variation, instead of the kind of the black and white criteria that our code currently uses.
Plus, I, I think it's good that we have a hook, cause if we don't, I mean, we can take it out, but right now, we're saying, this is the whole point of doing this, is because we have two facilities, we want to make a transitional, that's the reason. Otherwise, you just reject it, right, cause it's not in the code, but we're saying, well, based on this condition, this is what makes it, and because it is co-located, that's what makes it attractive, in my mind, that's what I see, is that, is part of the conditions as well. It works because it's co-located, it makes a transition, it makes all those kinds of things, but I think the co-location is critical to that conditional use permit.
And if you're, if you're generally not comfortable with the use at all, I would recommend, uh, then the appropriate motion would be to recommend denial of the application, but if you are comfortable with these criteria or other criteria, that can also be included in a motion to add any criteria that, that you've, in the, into your recommendation that you would like.
Was there a discussion of, like, limiting the size, or the number of occupants, or, um, units? And, or tying it somehow to the assisted living, so that it, they wouldn't have a very small assisted living, and then a large neighborhood of independent?
That's not a way, that, we often have a hard time thinking of all the ways it could go wrong, and that's not one way we thought, thought of.
Plus, they have to apply for conditional use permit anyway, right?
Right, but it.
But if they fit all these three.
The case that Genevieve is saying, what if someone wants to build a two-hundred unit independent senior living, and they have a four-room? Uh, I think it's prohibitive to license and staff, uh, a facility, I don't do this as a, for a living, but you could potentially ask the applicant, I think there's some practical considerations in terms of size that makes those facilities feasible, but no, uh, in the theoretical sense, yes, we could be burned by somebody, uh, getting a license for a one-room assisted living facility, and then building two-hundred senior independent living units next to it.
Could that be done under a development agreement basis, in terms of being able to limit or dictate number of units, and?
It could only if that use wasn't already permitted. It would, uh, and we generally want to avoid, uh, not permitting something in a zone and requiring, uh, each instance of that use to go through a development agreement process, especially as that has to go through the land use process. And really is kind of, uh, a one-off zoning, uh, or a spot zoning isn't necessarily legal concern anymore, but from a theoretical perspective, it's something we want to avoid.
Carlise kind of started, raise your hand, did you have a comment on this?
Because that's really more a condition so that if someone's in their house and then they're independent, but then they have a stroke and then they aren't independent, but they don't want to have to move, then it can be converted to assisted living for that person. I mean, th- there's other uses, but that's.
Ten percent of them.
Yeah, that, I, I, as I understand it, that's really the, designed to help, you know, people that maybe don't want to have to move, but need more care.
Is there, is there a ratio between like, how many doors do you have in the housing versus the assisted living portion? Is it like a one to ten ratio? Is it a, what, what kind of ratio is the, like beds to doors or something? Does that make sense? Rooms to doors, I don't.
So in, in our current assisted living facility, we have eighty-one units, apartments, uh, and roughly the same number of residents. Here, um, we're, I mean, we'd like to look at whatever option that we can to maximize the number of units we can get in there. And in my mind, I'm guessing there's probably twenty-five, thirty is kind of a number I'm thinking of independent living cottages that are thirteen hundred square feet roughly with a garage. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, I was just trying to get an idea what kind of ratio, if there was something we could do. And is that being treated like, uh, was it like a BUD or how's that handled on the interior portion of it?
It would just simply be subject to our commercial site plan.
That kind of.
Requirements.
I don't know if it's appropriate for me to make one more comment.
Sure, go ahead.
If it's helpful, um, with, with regards to the code, just long-term, um, we don't, we don't plan to do an independent living facility that's like two, three stories. But that, I mean, that is something that a lot of ci- cities do have independent living facilities that way. I, it's just a different type of product in my mind, because we're trying to build a product that's more attractive to someone that doesn't quite want assisted living, because moving into a large independent living facility is very similar. So in our minds, it's like, it's not gonna sell very well to someone that's ninety years old, that wants to be independent still. So, but I don't think it's inappropriate to have an independent living facility like that. A, a lot of cities have those, so. For what that's worth.
Any other conversation that needs to happen here?
Yeah, I mean, that's something to consider too, is that even though the applicant's not, not, uh, planning to have multi-story, it is permitted in neighborhood commercial, commercial, correct?
Right, it would be, uh, the height limit says governed by the neighborhood commercial and any transitional standards is governed by the transitional standard. So it would be subject to all of the same, uh, zoning regulations as any other.
Yeah.
A building in the neighborhood commercial.
So, it, it has the potential to have an unlimited number.
Of.
Dep- depending on how, of, of independent.
Right, there, there's no specific regulation about how many units, it's just.
Other than this, the building code.
The setbacks, the li- the building rights, those type of things.
There's a, the facility down there by the rec center, that one that they're building right now, is that what that is?
North of the rec center?
No, tho- those are just for, for rent, uh, multifamily.
Just multifamily rent.
Correct.
And that's in what zone?
That is in the CC zone, I believe. No. So in the, uh, this is not as elegant on a phone. In the building height. So in the neighborhood commercial, the height limit is thirty-five feet.
And what's the setback?
Uh, so, this is.
Aren't you right up against?
There are some homes to the north, which is where the transitional standards would apply. So generally, uh, the standard, uh, side yard interior setback in the neighborhood commercial is zero feet. But if you go down, uh, to adjacent to residential zones, which is what applies in this case, then it's actually a twenty-foot plus setback. It's twenty feet minimum and depending on the height, it can increase on a proportional basis based on as it gets higher, it has to go farther away.
This is just for that property, there is other neighborhood commercial that.
And just on the north side.
Wherever a neighborhood commercial butts.
Yeah, it's, if it's not up against residential, then it's zero.
Then it's zero, correct.
It, would it be feasible to attach some kind of a limiting factor related to the assisted living?
Uh, we can attach anything that, that feels appropriate to help, to help you feel comfortable about your recommendation.
I mean, I don't, I don't know what, what the right percentage would be, but I feel like there should be some kind of limiting factor.
Would that be covered with the, would that be covered with the building permits?
No, because.
Is that, are you talking about something else?
Once it's allowed, you can't.
Yeah, the building permits don't prohibit it, so.
So you could, you could build as many units as you had space for, only that.
Exactly, so what, I guess what I'm asking is that you want to even limit that further.
Well, no, so if they say the, the land where Jakers is, they, they bought that whole plot and then they had, uh, you know, a very small ten-unit assisted living. And then they built.
All the rest of it.
Thirty-five foot story, you know, apartment kind of things, all the way over to the freeway with, you know.
That's, I agree, that's.
Then, that's a possibility with this, which would take up all of the neighborhood commercial.
In that case, that's not zoned neighborhood commercial, but there are areas that, yeah, but that's a pertinent example.
Stretch that far, yeah.
It's just the example of a lot, a big plot of land.
Does it make sense to do a single level?
It, I don't have a strong opinion, uh, as to that. I, I would be prim- most concerned that it, it's well-designed and compatible with the adjacencies on either side. And, uh, I also would be perfectly comfortable with the recommendation to continue with some direction with specific issues to address. Uh, I don't think there's any need to, uh, to rush. And so we could definitely go back and do some more work if, if you'd like to direct us. There's no need to, to craft those changes on the fly if there are concerns.
Yeah, I, I'd be open to continuing it just to explore what some limiting factors could be that would, that would tie into that. That would still make it plausible and, and usable for someone who wanted to do that, but also limited it from taking over. Anyone have a problem if I make a motion?
Go ahead.
I move to, uh, continue this item, uh, for the staff to be able to look at some options for limiting the size or number of units, uh, on the, in, of the independent living. Is it an issue that I didn't say when?
What was that?
Is it, is it an issue that I didn't say when to continue it to? Because I didn't.
You don't need to. Uh, we can, you could include a, a, a specific date.
No, I'm not gonna.
Okay, we have a motion a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Um, aye also. Okay. Motion to continue is approved. We have a motion to adjourn, since we have nothing else left, unless we have additional conversation.
I, I have a question.
Yeah.
Just because we're kind of off, I want to talk to applicant maybe on this thing. We, I think that if, what we're saying by continuing it is we're trying to prohibit future other types of plans.
Yeah.
But it probably allows for the applicant to kind of consider.
Yeah.
That we've moved, we, we think this is a good idea, that maybe he can do some due diligence or something like that. Am I in the same boat as everybody else?
Yeah. So that's why I'd asked him, you know, like how many or, you know, the units, to get his, uh, the idea of what, what is gonna work for them.
Yeah, your comment is great to, to.
So it can be.
Avoid, avoid any future challenges we may face.
Yeah.
Okay, do we have a motion to adjourn?
I move that we adjourn.
Do we have a second? All, all, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.